Good afternoon. We will call the special meeting for Wednesday, November 29th, 2023 to order at 4:01 PM. Melissa, roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Present.
Director Jorgensen?
Present. Virtually.
Director Loma?
Here.
Director Malpakum?
Here.
Director Nelson?
Present.
Director Ott?
Here.
So we have six board members in person in the boardroom, and Director Jorgensen is joining us through WebEx remotely. Please join me as we observe a moment of silence. Director Nelson, can you please make the motion to adopt the agenda?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Melissa, roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the agenda has been adopted as presented. We do have executive session today for roughly 45 minutes. Director Daniels, can you please make the motion to enter into executive session?
I move that the Board of Education convenes into executive session to discuss legal advice per CRS 24-6-402, 4B, Particular Matter Personnel Issues.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Melissa, roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen? Oh. Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, we will enter into executive session now and reconvene in the boardroom for the rest of our special meeting at approximately 4:45 PM. Thank you. Okay, let's get started. Be good. Let's get started. We have returned from executive session, and there is no need to modify the agenda. And I do have a brief statement to make right at the very beginning. As you are aware, the district's Facebook page has been down for the past several days. Over the Thanksgiving break, there were several social media posts that were an absolute misrepresentation of the district. It's unfortunate that the district had to expend considerable manpower and resources during a holiday week to fix this issue. And I want to thank Superintendent Gall, Nicole Otmer, John McCarron, and Allison Burrow for their diligence in this regard. And I want to make it clear such incidents that disrupt district operations are taken very seriously and followed through. In the coming days and weeks, the district will unveil a robust and exciting social media platform. Thank you. Can I please have Director Loma lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Director Loma. So on the top of the agenda under Special Reports, we have Design Thinking Lab. I'm going to turn it over to you, Superintendent Gall.
Yeah, hi to the board and to the community. First, the rollouts are for the screens for the people in attendance are because we're updating some of the technology in here, and the work wasn't completed last week. So we have some temporary side views for everybody. I'm going to ask Nicole Otmer to come forward. We're bringing the design thinking idea into this special report because there's a contract action item on design thinking. One of the things I've noticed over the last couple of contracts is sometimes we forget the things that we have presented as a strategy. And so I wanted Nicole to go over with the board what the strategy has been on design thinking, what we've been able to do in the short year that we've been working on this, and then how that leads to the larger contract that is up for decision today. Nicole?
Great. Good evening, Board and Superintendent Gall. I'm excited to be here tonight to present an update on the Design Thinking Lab to you. I want to first start with we are not asking for additional funding. So let's start with that tonight. You approved funding for the design lab in the Fund Balance work in October 2022, and that is what we are providing an update on. When you hear the Design Thinking Lab, I also want you to know, although it says lab and we might think of a specific location, when we say lab, it's more the philosophy around design thinking that we're talking about. This can start in one specific place. In fact, we have a beautiful place for design thinking to take place over at Tesla. But what we want to do is let that philosophy live in the people who are engaged in these processes, and then they go back to their offices, back to their classrooms, back to their schools, and this starts to become our way of being that we problem solve and think through solutions together. It definitely desilos our work by having everyone come together around problems of practice that we carry with us in our work. So with that, I'm going to go into the design thinking definition. You might remember this from when you approved funding, but design thinking is really working on adult mindsets in the way we approach problems. We use cross-functional teams in the design thinking lab so that we get multiple perspectives around the problem. All of our design thinking engagements are connected to board priorities and district priorities. So we know, you know, a lot about the area network model, finding your excellence through experience in our high schools, the academic master plan, the task forces that are happening. Design thinking is a protocol that can help facilitate the ways we engage and execute on all of that work. So it starts with end users. We really know our problems of practice from the way we work, but we really need to design solutions that meet our end user needs, to have service toward them. So sometimes that's students, sometimes that's principals. It just depends on the solution that we're working toward. The board priorities of achievement, enrollment, and engagement are baked into all of the design processes because that is the outcome we're looking for in everything we work through in the design lab, as well as the strategic priorities of the district. On the screen now, you'll see the timeline. So when you approved the funding in October 2022, we knew that two things needed to happen right away. In the design world, we have a statement called a bias toward action. And so we took that in two ways as soon as the funding was approved. One was to launch an RFP process. We knew for the larger design thinking work over the next two years, we needed a transparent, competitive process to select a vendor for that work. So Chris Odom, or I'm sorry, Chief Odom will be up later today to brief the contract with you, and I'll let her talk to that whole RFP process. I'm going to talk about the pieces that we started engaging in right away. We did small-scale design thinking projects off of a minor contract initially in order to start flexing our muscles at design thinking. What does this look like? Who does it benefit? How can we come together as interdisciplinary teams to solve problems that are plaguing us? So you can see on the timeline here, we had some that were designed sprints. Those are intended to solve technical problems, so really quick challenges that we don't want to go any longer from problem straight to solution. There's not usually one right answer, and that's the beauty of design thinking. It brings multiple perspectives together to explore possibilities to solve that problem, and then we prototype those. And sometimes what we find is what we think's going to work great is utopia on paper, but you put it into practice and it doesn't work. And so the beauty of design thinking is you have other options right there that you can pick from. You can be testing at the same time in small scope and scale to determine which ones you want to scrap, which ones you want to refine, and then which ones you want to scale into the system because they're the most efficacious solutions for the team. So three of those that we'll give you a quick highlight on. One of them was custodial staffing. I know last year you heard a lot about our staffing challenges in our custodial areas in our schools. You heard a lot of principals spending a lot of time on that operational-focused effort. When they didn't have coverage for custodians in their building, they were vacuuming floors. They were the ones trying to find coverage. So we came together under a design statement. We always use those under the frame, "How might we?" That's a very design-thinking-centric framework. And we saw, we came to the statement of, "How might we reimagine custodial services in order to better protect principal time and create time for instructional leadership and systems for coverage when needs arise?" Out of that design thinking session that included custodial members, FOTC members, area superintendents, principals coming together to tackle this technical challenge, we came up with the area custodial supervisor model, which then aligned to our area custodial model and also put that supervisor as the central point to help staffing shortages. They can deploy people as needed so that that's taking that off of principals' plates. It also allowed for adjacent problems to be solved, which is what you often find in the design lab. The one thing you're going to solve gets fixed, as well as adjacent problems. In the custodial world, there were some concerns about safety and chemical use and mixing those things and the standardization of process and onboarding and training. All of that came into this design lab and has new frameworks around it because of the work that we did in the lab that day. And that one is in place right now in our schools. Middle schools are engaged in design thinking right now. Theirs is more of an ongoing process. They started last spring. Our middle school principals came together and they did a data dig. They do those obviously in their one plan as well, but in this case, they were really honing in on academic data first at aggregate, not looking school by school in our middle schools, but looking across all middle schools. What challenges do we see that are common across all middle schools, and how can we come together to start to ideate and make some prototypes and designs that impact those? The middle school principals are working mostly around the five E's component of supportive environment because that definitely came through as a need in all of our middle schools right now. We know also middle schools have some engagement that they're working through. They're also working through enrollment. So all of those tendrils are connected through the design lab, through the challenges that they're working to solve. The middle school principals started to bring small teams around them too. So each principal has three to four people from their school that are joining them to start these small-scaled solutions. They come back together, they learn from each other, they figure out what's working and what's not working. They have worked through nine different prototyped solutions under supportive environments. And I just talked to Principal Tony Carr today, who told me, "The ones that are working best are the ones that involve the students. We're doing it with them, not to them, and we're learning a lot about how we can make other changes that are done with our students rather than to them." Those two that they're working through right now are exploring integrated co-curricular courses, not at a macro level, at a very micro level right now to see, "How do students make better connections to their learning and their peers and their teachers when our content is more integrated?" They're also looking at interest-based activities, athletics, and clubs because middle school students told them they want a greater sense of belonging, and if they don't make a sports team or something like that, they still want a way to connect in the community. A byproduct of that, or an adjacent problem that surfaced, is when we got the 5E data and looked at it at aggregate across middle schools and noticed that supportive environment component, we brought focus groups of middle schoolers together. So we already had some qualitative data from the perception survey, but we pulled focus group of middle school together. Dr. Colicky's team deployed and did that at every middle school, and loud and clear we heard across the system, "Our students don't feel safe in bathrooms." You heard about this. That was out of the design thinking lab. Dr. Comfort was able to work with his capital team to start to deploy more resources to change that so that that sense of belonging that is going to impact achievement and engagement starts to change in the schools as well. So the middle school design work is still happening. They would welcome you in if you want to come to the design lab and learn more about that, or they would love to give you a presentation at some point so you can hear about the solutions they've tried, what's working, and where they want to continue to grow. The third one I'm going to bring to you tonight also comes from an approval you did in the Fund Balance last year as well, to deploy eight new buses. Remember this, 14 passenger buses to the area network model, two in each area. Unfortunately, those buses are a little delayed because of production of buses and chassis and things like that. They will be here this spring or summer. But what we learned is our transportation department right now has two 14-passenger activity vans already here that they use for AM and PM transportation to schools, but during the day, they're not being utilized. What a perfect opportunity to prototype with those two vans that are already here, build up systems and structures for checkout, making sure we think of conditions like, "How do we utilize these vans to first impact academic achievement?" We know that students do a great job with acquiring skills in school. Often, some of the deeper application pieces come from things like field trips or field experiences where we can utilize these activity vehicles. So the team that has input a lot on that is the athletics team because they have their own vehicles and they have their own checkout system that has lived mainly at high schools, but now we can use some of those same systems alongside systems transportation does to start a prototype here in the next few months to say, "What works in these systems and what doesn't?" So that when the eight get here and we're ready to roll in August, we've already done testing and worked out some of the kinks so that the deployment is much smoother as we move forward. So those are just three of the examples. We have many more that are going into the design lab, and I don't think it'll shock you to hear we have a backlog of projects to bring into this work to continue iterating forward and learning and flexing our muscles with design thinking. To that end, we have always intended on collaborating with a partnership throughout this. So we have Learner Center Collaborative here tonight, who is up for a vote on the contract because out of the RFP process, Learner Center Collaborative is who we'd like to have as our partner in this work. You can see that in the beginning phases, they will lead more of the design lab processes, but the intent over time will be to grow sustainability in the system because the sustainability will come from the fact that once you participate in more than one design process, it starts to become the way you approach every problem, and all of a sudden, problems don't feel like something cumbersome to tackle, but they feel like an opportunity to explore possibility. And that's really what we're trying to create in the system by engaging with design thinking. So that's it for me, but if you'll save your questions, I am going to introduce Dr. Katie Martin. She is here tonight with us from Learner Center Collaborative, and she is the Chief Impact Officer. I told you kind of where we've been, where we are currently, and she's going to tell you where we'll be going with the partnership if approved tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Gall and the board. I am honored to be here on behalf of the Learner Center Collaborative. We really embrace the design thinking process in all of our projects because we have seen, as Nicole mentioned, the possibility that comes from bringing people together to embrace problems and challenges and really co-create solutions together. So I want to share a little bit, this is the team structure that we have put in place to support this project. And pending approval of the contract tonight, we are ready to start planning and engaging in some design sprints starting tomorrow. So we have Devon Vidicca, who is the CEO, myself, we have Katie Weisberg, Director of Strategic Partnerships, Jesse Ross, and Liz Perry behind me, who's here also as a Director of Strategic Partnerships. This team has been pulled together because of their expertise working in districts, small and large, across the country, engaging in design thinking and really working on these projects, and are excited to partner with D11 to see how we can collaborate and really think about the solutions and the context that we can support here. We have a partnership, a growing partnership of over 150 state partnerships, districts, and schools around the country. So not only do we have the expertise and the experience of the team, but we also have our partnership network that we're really excited to glean insights from and also examples because we know that part of this is really seeing models and seeing what's possible to expand our own ideas of what's possible. You'll see that we've worked in Colorado as well on projects with hybrid school design and also at the Boise's level with the MTSS project. Something that I think is really important for you to understand about the Learner Center Collaborative and how we work is really our values. We see these values in how we work together as a team, but how we also work with our partners. So we are trusted and responsible partners. We really believe this work is important across the country and really growing and evolving our systems, and so we pride ourselves in being really trusted partners and coming alongside our partners to do the deep, important work. We are curious and humble learners. We know that we have expertise, but we also have a lot to learn about context and the people in which we work with, and so we want to engage as curious and humble learners. We're courageous. We know that there are tough problems to solve, and we want to show up as courageous partners to do that work together. We want to build inclusive communities that really engage students, board members. We want you to be part of this process so that you can see the design thinking as well and embrace it in your own work. And ultimately, impact-driven. We know that we have to make an impact. This work is not just about ideas, but it's really about putting those ideas into practice so that we can see the fruits of the labor and really start to see the changes that we want. Our approach and something unique that we bring as, you know, school leaders, we really want to start with listening to learners. The learners are who we serve. I love listening to Nicole talk about the middle school project, really understanding what the middle school students were wanting and then taking their perspectives and designing for them. So we do really start with that approach and, "How is this affecting you? What is your experience, and what can we learn from the learners?" One of the school design projects that we did in Long Island, a school district called Miniola, we listened to learners and we heard that they wanted a school where they could engage in real-world projects. They wanted a schedule that was flexible. They wanted to work on internships. And so from listening to learners, we helped to design that schedule with the team and the community and also redesign the role of the teachers and the students themselves. Another important way that we approach our work is the support from vision to implementation. We really help co-create the vision, but also work on this implementation, and that's through the design thinking process. Measuring what matters is also a really important part of this work. We've worked with many partners to redesign their local accountability model. In particular, in Kentucky, there's districts that are thinking about how they engage the community, get input from the board, of course, from students, from school district leaders, to really think about how to raise the bar for students and not just focus on a single test score, but really think about what matters to the community and how to design an accountability system that can hold them accountable for what matters most to the community. Part of this is co-designing. So we understand and we have these processes, but it's also about bringing the different district leaders, school leaders, cross-functional teams together and co-design. One of those examples is Alexandria High School. They're creating high school pathways, and they needed to think about transportation. They needed to think about how to share resources. So we've leveraged the community to really think about how to not just go forward with a single high school model, but really rethink their processes and structures to engage in that work. We lead with an inclusive approach, as I mentioned, and want to make sure that we're including all voices so that we can solve the right problems. And finally, celebrate what's learning, celebrate learning. We really believe in building on bright spots. There's great work that's happening, so we want to come in and understand the great work and build on those bright spots to move the work forward. An initial stage in this RFP and in this process is to co-create the design principles. So co-creating these design principles means we don't come in with a process and say, "Here's exactly what we're going to do. We want D11 to own this." As Nicole mentioned, this is ultimately, for sustainability, going to be led by the D11 team. So designing these principles around this work is an important first step to understand how we want to engage. Some common design principles, design with, not for, bias toward action, as you heard, really thinking about a yes-and approach. So we want to make sure that we are inclusive in thinking about what are the most important principles that we want to set forth that will guide this design lab and inform the work as it moves forward. The proposal, as you may have seen, really begins with the operational practices first. So really thinking about these eight to 10 practices that, as Nicole mentioned again, are backlogged. We want to start thinking about how we can support those. Once we create the design principles, we're going to start thinking about, "What are the projects we want to start with? And how do we create those teams to start engaging in those design sprints so we can start to see that work happening?" And then, of course, the project management, staying in close contact with Superintendent Gall and the internal district team to make sure that there's a constant feedback loop. From multiple partnerships, we know that that communication and collaboration is key to making a partnership work and having those structures in place where we're constantly seeking feedback, getting feedback, and sharing what's working over time. And then the last thing I just want to highlight is this idea around technical challenges and adaptive challenges. And as you've heard, these technical challenges sometimes are things that we know the answer to. We just have to find the process and put it in place that is more of a leadership challenge or a leadership issue where, "Here's the process we're going to put in place and we're going to make it happen." We can engage in some design sprints around that, but ultimately, we want to move into the place where we're looking at adaptive challenges that don't quite have answers. Again, how do we share resources? How do we deal with transportation issues in ways that we haven't done it before? How do we start thinking about school design processes really to engage students in meaningful, authentic learning experiences? And what resources do we have available in the community? So we can start moving into some of those adaptive challenges with the design thinking process once we get comfortable and get people moving and start really embodying those principles. So I'm excited to be here to think about the work. And again, once this is approved, we are ready to start work tomorrow with the team and start really thinking about those design cycles and what the projects we want to launch. So thank you for your time.
So because it comes up for contract, if we want some basic questions now, but the contract questions will come up when we get to that part of the agenda link. How many people competed for the RFP? What's the length of the contract? Those types of things. So if there's design thinking questions right now, I think we can engage in that short dialogue, but if the board understands what we're doing and what we've done and where we're headed, I think we can reserve other questions for the contract itself.
You heard Superintendent Gall, Director Bankus?
So I have a couple of questions, and thank you for the review, for those of us who don't remember all the way back to October. So the two questions, what you had talked about, the 14-passenger buses and how to rethink that, and I heard athletics, and my heart is in elementary school. So how do you see opening up opportunities at different levels other than for athletics at high school?
Yeah, and I should clarify that point. What we're using from athletics is the processes that they have to check out the athletic vehicles, not using the vans for athletics. So absolutely, to that point, we want to use those vans through academic means as well. So we're thinking about things right now like field trips. And when you only have a 14-passenger van, you couldn't get a whole classroom out, so what might that look like? But also after school events or a community event in the evening even possibly, getting transportation back to the school because we know some of our families have communicated that they can't access those events at times. And so we're trying to think outside the box and really let the principals live in a place of possibility for using those current vans that can then help inform the others. And I should also name with that, we recognize and understand one of the design constraints that we put in that process was that elementary principals get the furthest lead time to book those vehicles further out than middle school and high school right now because they have access to other resources that elementary schools don't. That's part of the prototype design.
That makes a huge difference, and I appreciate that. And then in the meetings that folks from schools are being pulled together, how much time is that taking out of other things that happen at the school level?
Yeah, so the middle school principals convene more readily, and then they bring that team of three around them to other pieces. So middle school principals have a monthly level meeting where they're doing a lot of this design process work. And I would say right now, the cadence is probably every other month that they pull the three teachers or other support staff around with them. So it's about a half-day every couple of months that they're coming in that way. But we do have resources, thanks to the dollars that you dedicated to this, to pay outside of contract hours where they are developing some of the frameworks and the iterations that they'll use, but then those come into their workday. It's a better, smarter way of working that gets us different outcomes. So that's actually in their job roles is where they're implementing some of the work.
So I heard two things, and they seem in conflict. At the middle school level, there are monthly meetings, and then I heard half-day every two months, so I'm not sure.
So the middle school principals are beating monthly, but that small team that I mentioned, they bring them around them every other month. So sometimes it's principal-centric, and then sometimes it's with the small team as well.
I see. Thank you for clearing that out. Absolutely.
Director Loma?
Okay, I was on your webpage, so, and I got it on my head. Now, you come into a district and you look at our data, and then you determine where the data directs you? Is that how you come in?
We will come into the district and work with leaders. We'll do empathy interviews, understand, data is a piece of it, but also getting information from community stakeholders about what's working, what challenges, and what possibilities exist. Really starts with relationships.
And that's how you chose the middle schools? We're going to focus on that because there's been an issue, been talked about. Okay, I just wanted to see how you came in.
So this all started, if you remember back, at the This all started, if you remember back at the Fund Balance Task Force. David, are you here? Yeah, David's right there. This was under David Colicky's title on the Fund Balance Task Force, because David came forward last year and said, I think we have a middle school problem.
Right.
And so David wanted to earmark money when we had the Fund Balance Task Force on what are we going to do about middle schools? And then I said, oh, I've got a great idea, which is, I don't know what to do about middle schools, but I have a process where middle school leaders, through the design process, can find the solution using the design thinking process. And so that's why we started on middle schools, was because it was David who brought forward last year after reviewing multiple layers of data, not just achievement, enrollment, five E's, all that, that says, if we're going to put money into rethinking our school experience, we need to start it at the middle school. And so that's why we started with middle schools.
And so you'll just kind of troll the district and find areas that we do?
There's no trolling. I mean, the backlog right now of chiefs that wants to get in to the design thinking process that we're currently managing at a Band-Aid level, because it's taken us time to go through the process to get to the RFP and the contract that we present today. But this now gives us the sustainability to bite into the number of challenges that we know.
You know where you're going to go. You know.
Yes. There's more discovery to find, but we have a plan of action.
I like it. Thank you.
Director Nelson.
So that was one of my questions as well of, do you already have your eight to 10 projects identified for this upcoming year?
I think we have like 22 on the list right now.
So how are you prioritized?
That's part of it. We will rubric against that, but often too, we're seeing the task forces that you heard an update on recently. Some of them need in the lab quickly to have multiple stakeholders around the problem so that then they can go prototype. So we will have a rubric against that and definitely thinking of impact. We will be studying the impact of every single engagement here, looking at measures and metrics of what is the return on investment for what we're doing and what is the impact to the system on a scaled level.
That makes sense. I have a question more specifically around working with your organization and can you just, you don't have to go really detailed, but what does that look like? I mean, you're a nationally based organization, so I'm guessing you're from out of town and so, and you have the different, what'd you call them, director positions? So is it that you might be running multiple projects at a time and each person's focused in one topic?
Yeah, that's kind of how we've started to conceptualize it and, you know, hopefully we can meet tomorrow and plan pending approval. But the initial thinking is that we have about 24 days on site, so we believe strongly in relationships, even though we're out of town. That is an important piece to come and be in person, do this work together. And that would mean that we would have with multiple directors, we would look at the problems, we would understand against the rubric, which ones are the first ones to really be addressing. And then we would bring in a team, ideally a cross-functional team, led by one of the team members and then working with the champions internally to go through the process and measure and engage in the design sprints.
So that 24 days, is that over the course of the year or for project?
Over the course of, over the course of the year, we're looking at 20, about 24 days and we can extend, of course, but we really feel strongly that we are here and committed to the outcomes and whatever that takes.
Do you do any online?
We do as necessary, but we usually start with relationships in person, developing that connection. And then there are opportunities to check in when that makes sense, to do some virtual communities of practice or just project management typically is done virtually.
So the pie charts, the pie charts is, that's then over the course of the year where you're gradually backing off. Like you're going to be really upfront intense at the beginning and then, yeah, that one. And then, so the one on the right, that's probably more towards the end of the contract.
Of the contract, yes. Our goal is to make this internal and sustainable. When we let the RFP, we were very specific with having proven experience in the design thinking process and not just in, many, many companies will look at this just from a school redesign work, but we knew that a lot of our design sprints were operational in nature, that we needed to get some structural things lined up first to then get to some larger strategic items. So one, they had to have proven a track record. Two, they needed to be able to be on site to do it. But the really difficult component was to get the project management in there as well. The work that we have done over the last year in bringing this to the forefront, it's the project management piece that's been the hardest. When people get in the space, people are engaged, but how does the work continue to Director Bankus's question? I don't want middle school principals spend six and a half weeks in the design thinking lab, rethinking how to do the work that they're supposed to be up on the top of the hill leading right now. So having that partner that could manage both the facilitation and then the project management and really to this place, really to the last pie slot, the pie chart, is training us to be able to do this. The long-term goal is for us to have this to be, and one, that we learn this as a skillset, but then that two, that we can facilitate this internally. We don't want to take on a long-term cost to further in debt the district. These are monies that were set aside as kind of one-time dollars that came from the Fund Balance Task Force that said, let's take advantage of that to teach us the skill so that we can then take it on. I've done this before. I did this in another city and we did take it on and it actually grew to be larger than the district. It's now being used by the city, that the city agencies come to that design space that the school district owns, because people realize that it's just, it's a great skill for adults to have and how they work through both the simple problems and the more complex problems.
Sounds great. I would just say that let us know when it makes sense for us to pop in and observe and learn it with you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You made the offer, Ms. Otmer.
I did. It's going to happen. You'll get invites soon.
Send us invites. Director.
Thank you. Going back to perhaps Superintendent Gall's comments about how it's become a bigger project for a greater community, what, two questions. One, about the data maybe that we've already shown from, towards successes from what we've already worked on. And then the second will be, we know we have the eight to 10 projects, we have more. What professional development or sustainability is built into it? And I know we're looking at, you know, sustainability, but truly with changeover in personnel, what, you can never anticipate how things are going to look in five years or something. If it's so, if it's that amazing, how are we to carry that forward?
I think it's the frameworks that stay in mind, that slide that showed that you start with empathy and it's the process you go through. And then the next time a problem comes up, you can't not approach it that way. So even if you're not the one out facilitating it, it's working in your office every day after you learn to build and flex these muscles as well. Chief Odom will speak to this later, but her teams have been through two of the processes and she said still people are coming to her about how empowered they feel that the solution they have is the one that we worked through and made better and improved with other input and that's what's being utilized right now. So it really empowers people through the process.
Okay. And then the data side, how, like the middle school project, it sounds like started in the spring and bathrooms have come up, but anything else?
Yeah, absolutely. The other pieces that they're working on are those co-created courses or the co-curricular courses and interest-based activities. And what we're doing right now is the five, the focus groups that met in the spring are reconvening right now to get another touch in to see what the difference is that we've made over time. And there's also many surveys that Dr. Colicky could speak to a lot better than I could, but that are going out, smaller chunked five E surveys to do a temperature check before we wait the whole year for that data to say, are perceptions starting to change? Are we meeting the needs of the end users for which we're designing for?
Okay. And just one last question. How can you ensure diversity amongst your groups? I mean, everybody from some of our marginalized groups like special education or racial equity questions come to mind, socioeconomic, teacher, ESP. I love that you've mentioned students.
Yep, absolutely. That's part of the design work that we'll start engaging in as we plan out the rubric of which projects come forward, but that's the intent. One of the design principles is inclusivity. Do you want to add?
Yeah, I wanted to, that's part of it is when we think about engaging the team and saying, what are the design principles? Lead with inclusivity is an important piece and that means we have to go and find people who are at the margins, who may not typically be part of the process to say, we want your voices. We want to understand how this is impacting you. We want to understand divergent thinking and solutions. So that's absolutely core to the process. And I wanted to speak too about the professional development. As Nicole mentioned, when people feel like their ideas are the ones being put into place, they're more engaged, they're empowered, it leads to retention. So that professional development, they're learning through the process and then they want to stay. They want to see that this is part of the culture because their ideas are being used. And then that continues to live through the culture. And if people leave or go to different places, it still is really evident in the culture of how people operate.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no further comments or questions, Director Jorgensen is good too. I can't see him on my screen. Okay, I don't see anything from him. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Exciting work. I have been, in my professional career, involved in this type of design thinking process, iterative process, to find innovative solutions. So this is exciting that, and we are looking forward to send us an invite. We are looking forward to participating or just coming and watching one of those design thinking labs. Adoption of consent items. Director Art, can you please make the motion to adopt the consent items? Oh, sorry.
I moved that the Board of Education adopts all consent items as designated in the agenda. The consent items are E2, approval of November 8th, 2023, regular meeting minutes; E3, approval of November 15th, 2023, special meeting minutes; E4, approval of personnel recommendations for November 29th, 2023.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please, Melissa.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Mal Pakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the consent items have been adopted as presented. Action items, contract award. This is back to you, Design Thinking Lab Consulting Services. Director Loma, can you please make the motion for action item F1?
I move the Board of Education approves contract C2024-0057 award to a learner-centered collaborative in an estimated amount of $999,306 and allow 10% correct contract increases for any approved contract modification without further board approval. The board, the period of performance will begin November 30, 2023, and if fully executed will end December 31, 2025.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Superintendent Gall, back to you. Chief Otto.
Thank you, Superintendent Gall. Good evening, Board of Education. I'm really excited. There's very few times that I get to come up here and share something that I've experienced and I've been able to play in this and I'm all in, just to start up front. Do you want me to bring up my slides? That's okay. So tonight I bring a contract that will launch a comprehensive design thinking model within our K-12 education system. This contract is for a two-year period and will support eight to 10 design thinking engagements in the first year. Please forgive any overlap that my presentation has. Great minds think alike. I would like to point out on this slide that Ms. Otmer has identified a tag, a tagline for her program and building mindsets towards innovative strategy development and implementation on existing and emerging challenges. And that's what we say and think and believe when we talk about design thinking. As noted earlier, the board approved a fund balance initiative spanning three years and a total funded amount of $1.5 million. And Ms. Otmer jump-started this with an initial, small-scale design thinking lab program. Three programs were identified earlier and two of those three I was able to participate in. And I can't tell you how important and how empowering it is. When people in your organization feel like they are valued enough to make a difference. They are empowered and they feel like they are important enough and they are changing what is happening at the district. Specifically with the custodial remodel, they have established and built relationships with the principals and it has been very important in moving into a centralized model. They're able to standardize chemicals, they're able to standardize cleaning standards, they're able to put people in place when people are missing or absent for that day and it keeps going. But more importantly, it's taken work off the principal's plate, so they're able to focus on instructional priorities. So why design thinking strategies? We just saw a very powerful presentation on how this strategy is important and as I said earlier, I wholeheartedly, I'm all in on this. I hope that I get to participate in future design thinking labs. In recent years, design thinking has emerged as a powerful problem-solving methodology across many fields, both private and in public sectors. This was very obvious during the solicitation process where dozens of companies reviewed the solicitation. And even design thinking is used in several Fortune 500 companies. They use it to make minor changes and impactful to refine culture or to make product changes. There were examples that we didn't get to talk about, but GE Healthcare used this process to change MRI equipment to be more user-friendly, so kids weren't afraid to have scary procedures done. Bless you. Harvard Business School defines design thinking as a user-centric solution-based approach to problem-solving in their business models. And now it's emerging into the K-12 education system. Having a design thinking lab for staff in which innovative solutions are ideated and implemented to address D11's most pressing issues and challenges will truly allow staff to be empowered to make a difference. Hopefully I will. Let me share now, moving into the overview of the solicitation and evaluation process. In June of 2023, we posted the initial RFP under full and open competitive procedures. We received three proposals, but none of which met all the RFP essential requirements. So we ended up canceling that initial RFP, reviewing the requirements, re-scoping and reissuing a second solicitation in August of 2023. This revised proposal received five responsive, responsible proposals. Under best value source selection procedures, an award is made to the overall best value that meets the requirements of the solicitation and has a superior technical proposal and demonstrated past performance record that provides a high confidence the contract will produce the desired outcomes. Pricing is evaluated for completeness, reasonableness and realism. For this project, all written technical proposals were evaluated and down-selected firms were invited to participate in presentations that were also evaluated to produce a top-ranked offer. To determine best value requires a final review of qualities, capabilities, outcomes, demonstrated and reliable performance. And before you get to the price negotiation, then there is the trade-off determination. Learner-centered collaboration or LLC was evaluated as the best value solution based on the overall thoroughness of their technical approach, their breadth of operational and strategic school framework experience and demonstrated measurable outcomes, dedicated project management staff with national experience and fluid engagement pricing strategies. Several items on this slide, you'll see the best value trade-off determination reflects several items that support them rising to the highest level and the high ranking that they received. I won't read through them, but I would like to highlight a few that are important to understand why this company rose to the high level it did. They had the ability to provide qualified, on-demand, experienced- They had the ability to provide qualified, on-demand, experienced project support for each engagement. Their demonstrated past performance had proven measurable outcomes. They had instructional and operational-focused experience. They had a demonstrated track record of working with innovative schools and industry and with large educational organizations at a national level. There's a high confidence in their ability to successfully implement programs and simultaneously invest in internal capacity to create systems that are sustainable for the district to reap in the long term. And lastly, LCC's proposal included technical and tactical design thinking focus and versatile, intentional, and personalized to our district's strategy and design. So what will this contract service provide? During the implementation phase, they will provide identification of prioritized efforts, they will sit and have implementation management, they will have data collection and monitoring for improvement, there will be discussions about stakeholder involvement, and last, they will develop project communications. If awarded, performance will begin in the next couple of days. We'll sign the contract, but the period of performance will start in the next few days. This first year will start and end in one year, and that engagement will have eight to 10 engagements, and they will be focused on operational design sprints. If they elect to exercise a second option term, it will start a year from now and end by December 2025. Year-two engagements will occur within our school district, and they will include finding our excellence, academic master plan K-12 pathway implementation, and area network portfolio approach support services. This will include design innovation workshops, prototyping ideas, project management, recruit and select school redesign, school transformational proposals, school team office capacity, and measurement. So this is a two-year term with a period of performance ending December 31, 2025. It includes all of our standard terms and conditions, and the pricing structure has firm rates but has flexibility within each engagement. This is why we will award this contract at a not-to-exceed amount that has a contract capped of $999,306. Awarding a not-to-exceed contract allows flexibility for planning, implementation, and adjusting the scope of each engagement as it needs to be upward adjustment or downward adjustment. This is why we have written the motion to obtain an additional 10% of contract scope. This is not for budget approval, it's rather contract increase approval. So what are the desired outcomes? In every contract, there are outcomes, both desired and anticipated, and for this effort, we expect to have outcomes that include opportunities to innovate, we expect to find efficiencies, improve communications and collaboration within our staff, determine criteria to enable monitoring to improve programmatic outcomes, transform traditional mindsets, and ultimately improve student outcomes through school strategic design efforts. And finally, we want to build sustainable process and building capability and capacity in our design thinking leadership and our school teams. So what return on investment does design thinking produce? As Ms. Ottmer mentioned earlier, we anticipate being able to meet all the return on investments meeting board priorities. There's potential to increase enrollment, there's potential to impact school academics, there's potential to grow community engagement, and there's potential to grow staff collaboration. The other and most important return on investment is to develop our stakeholders so they can systematize design thinking into their everyday normal routine. In closing, design thinking efforts will support district teams to foster system change through investment in forward-focused mindsets, tools, and more. These shifts include opportunities to innovate, find efficiencies, improve communication and collaboration, but ultimately to improve student outcomes. And I would like to just hit home again, the staff that have participated in this feel very empowered, and they really want to be here. They feel like they own the process, and they can help make a difference, and that is really important in retention. At this time, this concludes my overview, and I'm here for any questions. Ms. Rosa Garcia is the contracting officer for this endeavor, and Ms. Nicole Ottmer is the project manager. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief Odom, for that really well put-together presentation. And when you talk about our staff being empowered and valued, I can sense the passion in your voice and you going through that process, so thank you for sharing that too. Both questions. Director Nelson?
Just a quick question on your second slide where it states that we had allocated $1,500,000 for this process. Did we already use the $500,000,000 in this first year, or is that for later?
I will attempt to answer that question. I believe the first year, some of that money was utilized, but not nearly all of it. I believe Ms. Ottmer, and she can come up and really better answer that question.
A small amount was used on that initial contract, but we also used grant funding on that initial contract as well to get the work started. So it did roll over, so that budget is still there to be able to be utilized toward this contract.
So it goes till 2025, and you're anticipating that it'll cost just shy of a million, but we do have a little reserve.
Right. The others is for the operating costs, like when we pay extra duty pay after school, or when we utilize substitutes, or we use a lot of sticky notes in design thinking so we can get all of those materials and supplies to execute on the work. And sometimes there's a little cost to run one of the prototypes, and so we can use that funding to help support the ideas that are coming forward as well.
And I love that you planned for all of that, and you're not going to come back to us later and say, wait, we need to pay people to attend this. Thank you, and good job, all of you. Excellent presentation to each of you. Go, team.
And the money that is left over, if there is any, comes back into our general front contingency. Director Loma?
Well, I appreciate the presentation, and when I hear it, you know, what a unique concept, you know, getting people involved in decision-making, and it always works. But it sounds very transformative and servant leadership model. That's what it sounds like to me. And you just kind of packaged it in a certain way, but yeah, and you know, I can understand, like, the leader in my mind should be the primary assistant, making sure everybody gets what they need to get the job. And I like the idea, well, you tell me what you need, I can't tell you what you need, and then you kind of flip it, and the involvement, the whole thing. So I got my information, I want to get more information from you directly aside from this, but just so I can have it as a resource, and I'm like a research nut. I am, I'm kind of crazy like that. Anyway, but I appreciate everything that you presented, your passion. Chris, I've known you for a long time, and I can see your passion, and you don't do that very often like that, so I take it very seriously, but I appreciate your work.
Director Ott?
Thank you. I was talking to a principal about design lab thinking and innovative work in the district, and just, so this is kind of like more for Nicole and Superintendent Gall. One comment this person had was that even, of course, we have our own innovative schools and our own award-winning programs, and just the exchange even within elementary schools to elementary schools and visiting at different levels, and maybe that can be incorporated, but I think in general, perhaps, and maybe it's happening in some of our schools, but I would encourage that to happen in more schools in general as we continue this project, because we have so much to learn from each other within the district. So just an observation. Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions. I like the way, Ms. Odom, you tied everything to the board priorities out there, and ultimately it's all about improving student outcomes. And I want to emphasize again, this board is all about improving student outcomes. We are an educational institution pursuing excellence in everything that we do, and that the central focus of that is our students. Students come first in District 11, and I'm glad that when we are looking at these projects, we are putting students first out there. Roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpackham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the contract was awarded as presented.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. MLO Plan Amendment. Director Bankus, can you please make the motion for action item F2?
I move that the Board of Education approves the Plan Amendment to the 2017 Mill Levy Override for the PIP 2017 to 12, the D11 Promise for a project initially named the Mitchell Promise. The D11 Promise will support high school graduates who meet academic and other eligibility requirements. This PIP will run for four years, beginning July 1, 2023, through June 30, 2027. The annual budget for this PIP is $200,000.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Superintendent Gall, first, this item was presented to the board as a non-action item, so now this returns back as an action item, and I also believe we have a special guest. I would like you to introduce.
We do all ask Brandon to just cover, there's no new updates, maybe a minor one, and then just to introduce Lance, again, as our partner.
Yes. Good evening, Board. As Director Bankus stated, we are here tonight with the hope that the board will approve MLO 2017 PIP 12 Plan Amendment with changing the item description from the Mitchell Promise to the D11 Promise. If you recall, we did go through the District 11 Mill Levy Override Oversight Committee on 10/17 with an approval vote, and since we met last, we presented to the District Accountability Committee on 11/16 with an approval vote. So with that, we do have a special guest, Mr. Lance Bolton, president of Pike's Peak State College, and I believe he wants to make a few remarks.
Board President Malpackham, board members, Superintendent Gall, thanks for the opportunity to be here. I will tell you in honor and appreciation of you all, I did two things I rarely do, a tie-to-tie, and I wrote some remarks, and I would like to share both of those. So I want to start with Superintendent Gall. We met, I think, for the first time about 18 months ago, and if I'm not mistaken, it was his first day on the job as superintendent, and we had lunch together. One of the things that we talked about was the power of Promise Programs for students, and I just want to tell you, it is amazing, exhilarating, you name the superlative, that's how I feel about being here and seeing this District 11 dream come to fruition, and so I really appreciate you all. Promise Scholarships in our hands at Pike's Peak State College have increased college-going rates by as much as 76%. Promise Programs like the one you're building this evening give kids permission to dream, to think bigger, to imagine themselves in professional careers that might seem light years away and completely out of their reach until the moment they hear about the program. Through our programs, young people find purpose, vocation, economic self-sufficiency, careers, and a life of productive citizenship. The District 11 Promise Scholars you send us will receive extra attention. We will provide focused coaching support and special programming. Our goals begin with enrolling District 11 Promise Scholars but are ultimately focused on their successful completion. We're committed to the success of your students. Years from now, hundreds, perhaps thousands, of young people in our community will look back to the opportunity you created tonight and see that as an inflection point in their lives, where the trajectory changed and new possibilities emerged to become healthcare professionals, first responders, high-tech programmers, and many more opportunities. I'm grateful for all the partners who were part of this success, including the Dakota Foundation, the Legacy Institute, Jerry and Pam Bruni from the Bruni Foundation, and I'm especially grateful this evening for your partnership. Thank you, District 11 Board, for your vision and bold action. Finally, I'm grateful to Michael for his leadership and follow-through. I thank you all on behalf of the students whose lives are changing this evening, on behalf of community employers, and from Pike's Peak State College. We will accomplish incredible things together. I look forward to the partnership with District 11 leaders, counselors, teachers, and I look forward to returning and sharing our progress with all of you. You're making a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Bolton, isn't it?
Yes.
Dr. Bolton, thank you. Thank you for joining us, thank you for your heartfelt message, and thank you for your partnership, working with District 11 and sharing your relationship with Superintendent Gall, too. That's interesting to note that the first day on his job, you guys had a meeting, so you hit the ground running.
He hit the ground running. Thank you.
Superintendent Gall, do you have anything to add?
We have no further comments to add.
Okay. Both, any comments or questions before I call for a roll call? Okay, this was, again, discussed as a non-action item before. Again, I, and I know that all the board members would agree with me, and what Dr. Bolton talked about, this gives our students the permission to, how did he put it, permission to dream, and especially students that come from economically disadvantaged families now have the opportunities to pursue economic sufficiency by going to college and pursuing careers. So looking back, hopefully, we are looking back 10 years from now and seeing all the students impacted by this life-changing opportunity. Director Loma, you do have a comment?
I did, and I just appreciate, I hear the passion in your words, and it does give people opportunity to dream. I've been to countries, and I won't mention the country because I don't want to offend anybody, but you can see they've lost the ability to dream. They know they're stuck, and there's nothing they can do about it. But these type of things, and we all are part of it, break down that wall, you know, and education is the great equalizer. You know, I came from a very bad neighborhood. I was ducking bullets at 12, and education was the key. And, you know, you struggle along the way with education, and so that, us being a part of it, like you said, 10 years from now, they may not know us on this earth, but we will get our rewards, and I'm excited just to be a part of it, to be able to vote with this board for it, and I thank you for all your hard work there at Pike's Peak.
Dr. Bankus?
I would like to add that in addition to the tuition, the fees, that the support that the students will have to make sure that they don't wake up one morning and go, oh, my gosh, what am I doing here? Because the supports will be in place so that they can say that out loud to somebody who knows and cares, to carry them through, and they can finish the goal. So thank you for making sure it's a comprehensive program, and thank you again, Mr. Gall, for bringing that to us. It's outstanding, and I'm proud out in the community to be able to say that this is available to all of our high school students. So thank you.
Dr. Bolton assured us that the Promise students get extra attention at Pike's Peak State College. So with that, roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen? Director Jorgensen?
Aye, thank you.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpackham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, and it is with proud support that I say that this board unanimously approved this, and we look forward to this partnership. Come back and report to us at periodic intervals. Thank you, sir. Moving on to the next contract award. Director Nelson, can you please make the motion for action item F3?
I move that the Board of Education approves Contract C2024-1010 to Field Turf Inc. in the not-to-exceed amount of $2,343,283 to start November 30, 2023, and a contract completion date of June 14, 2024.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Since Superintendent Gall stepped out, I'm going to hand it over to you, Chief.
Thank you, President Malpackham. Good evening, Board. The next best thing is presenting something that's going to directly benefit students. So I'm really excited that Mitchell's going to get a brand-new track and field. So with us tonight is Ms. Christina Sandoval. She's the contracting officer that executed the solicitation and prepared the contract. Mr. Travis Whitley is our District Project Manager. And from Field Turf USA is Mr. Jed Easterbrook. Thank you for making the trip. He is the Rocky Mountain Regional Vice President. Before I get into the overview of the schedule, the solicitation, evaluation, and contract, I would like to kind of give a little bit of background. The board approved the Fund Balance Initiative to replace two track and field projects in October of 2022. There's a theme going tonight. Last year, Dougherty High School was the track and field, the first track and field that we upgraded. And now I am bringing the second project from Mitchell High School Track and Field. So today, the current track and field at Mitchell High School offers substandard safety and performance characteristics for the student athletes that utilize it. This facility requires constant maintenance from district landscaping crews, along with significant amount of water annually to keep the heavily utilized turf in usable condition. The field at this school is comprised of Kentucky bluegrass, and the track is composed of cinder fines. Those are those crushed volcanic rock. The proposed project will remove the existing track and field surfaces and replace with artificial turf, synthetic running tracks, new drainage infrastructure, and new LED sports field lighting. These upgrades will bring the site up to the high school site's expectations so that we can offer our student athletes and band members a state-of-the-art facility to practice and compete, just as we have done at Coronado with our MLO dollars and Dougherty High School with our Fund Balance Initiative. It is noteworthy to follow up on a previous board director's question about a safety concern. So we wanted to incorporate into our briefing this time, safety of synthetic turf fields is a popular topic among athletes, coaches, and parents. District 11 firmly believes that the Mitchell students' athletes will be safer playing on this new synthetic turf field than their current bluegrass field. A five-year prospective study of competitive high school football revealed that players playing on Field Turf Field experience fewer ACL injuries, fewer concussion injuries, and fewer severe injuries when compared to players playing on natural gas field, grass fields, excuse me. Next, I'd like to give you a little overview of the project detail and the schedule. So if you approve tonight, we'll get started tomorrow with issuing the contract and notice to proceed. The design phase of this project will begin right away. That includes surveys, soil borings, geotechnical inspections. And full construction at Mitchell High School will commence on March 1. Yes, March 1 of 2024. They will begin placing construction fencing around the work area to ensure safety for district staff and students. After the site is secured, demolition and excavation will begin. The existing sod and track surfaces will be removed and disposed of. And rough grading will begin to give each site the elevation and contour needed to build from. After grading, the new drainage pipe will be installed, and once draining infrastructure is placed, new base materials will be imported, placed, and compacted. Once the subsurface materials have been prepared, the asphalt track base will be paved, and the turf carpet will be installed. Once the asphalt has cured, and the polyurethane track surface will be installed and striped. So the substantial completion date will be June 14. So that means that the Mitchell students will be able to use this brand-new track and field for summer practice. So that's something overdue, and it's well-deserved. So that's why we're trying to get this going right now. Next, I'd like to just give you a little highlight of the solicitation and the evaluation that was conducted. This requirement was issued under full and open competition requirements, and the evaluation team ranked Field Turf USA's proposal as the overall best value offering. They have the highest technical score, the strongest past performance rating, and their pricing was the most competitive. Our project team is recommending that Field Turf USA be awarded the contract for this proposed work, highlighting that their technical proposal received the highest score for the following reasons. In their proposal, Field Turf provided a comprehensive plan for executing this project and a detailed project schedule. The proposed project team has extensive experience with sports construction and a successful track record of similar projects within D11. Additionally, Field Turf directly employs architects, engineers, and track and field builders, which will simplify and streamline the scheduling and the execution of this project. Field Turf has an extensive resume of experience that includes many Division I and professional athletic facilities. They offer an eight-year turf warranty and five-year warranty on the track surface. And they have excellent past performance on similar projects for us in D11. Moving on to the contract overview, this is a not-to-exceed price. This is a design-build effort. And due to the nature of a design-build contract, this is primarily a not-to-exceed because of the design effort. There will be unknowns. There could be unknown site conditions. But we anticipate that, just like on the other projects we've had, we're not going to experience anything, any great unforeseen conditions. But we price at the maximum, and then we'll adjust to the actuals after the design phase is implemented. This contract has our standard terms and conditions. There is a liquidated damages clause of $500 a day, which means in the event the contractor doesn't meet the completion date at their fault, not ours, but their fault, this is what we estimate it would cost to transport our students every day to and from Gary Berry Stadium, where we'd have to transport them for summer practice. This does conclude my overview of the contract, the terms and conditions, the solicitation project, and the exciting news that Mitchell is finally going to get a brand-new track and field. If you have any questions for myself, Ms. Garcia, or Mr. Travis Whitley, our resident project expert, we'll turn it back over to the board.
Thank you, Ms. Odom. Superintendent Gall, do you have anything to add because you stepped out?
Just the resounding positive feedback that we've gotten on the two track and fields at Coronado and Dougherty. It's exciting for us to then be able to get this done at Mitchell and get it done in an expedited manner. I just, I can't wait to see the Marauder logo and the colors that they choose. So it's an exciting time for Mitchell and for all of District 11. And, you know, when I think that three of our four comprehensive high schools will have brand-new track and fields within an 18-month period, and I think, I know that that will require neighboring school districts to think about investments that they're making in their sports fields. And even though that might sway one family to stay in the district as compared to come to our district, that is great for public education. If every high school in El Paso County is following the lead that we've set here, ensuring that there are state-of-the-art, safety-driven, and environmentally-friendly track and fields, then every family in El Paso County is in a better space.
Thank you. Director Loma?
Well, it's just appropriate to have this right after the D11 Promise. It just shows the progress. I had a question, and I know, I don't want to try to spend more money. What about the stands, the seating?
I had the same thought in mind.
You know, and I know that that's not in here, but I'm sure you had a thought of that.
Yes, we have talked about that. And that is, in its own right, a decent undertaking, depending on sort of how far we want to take that. And the kind of the general thought in our office was, we want to get through getting the athletic surfaces installed, and then sort of circle back and revisit the seating. So it's a desperate need at all the sites. And, but that was kind of our thinking, is let's get them playable surfaces, and then we'll sort of step back and revisit. Because there's, and there's an opportunity there. Do we want to provide bathrooms? How much seating do we want to provide? And those are really kind of extensive projects in their own right.
And they differ. Those needs differ by site, based upon the proximity of the fields to the main buildings. Chris Knoll has promised me a project plan on some timelines of how we think we can get to what we'll just call adequate seating for non-homecoming events. You know, I mean, the standard junior varsity, or maybe not as attended sporting events to be able to occur, where folks aren't, you know, sitting on the side of the hill at Coronado there to be able to see the game.
Seeing no further comments. Roll call. Again, good information. And it's, again, student-centered, student-focused, excited for Mitchell getting this opportunity, Mitchell students. And looking forward to the opening of that field in July, August, sometime in next year. Roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpackham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The contract was awarded as presented.
Thank you.
Director, moving on to the next resolution. Director Daniels, can you please make the motion for action item F4?
I move that the Board of Education approves Parameters Resolution 2024-15.
Second.
Moved and seconded. This item was presented to the board as non-action during last week's special meeting. Superintendent Gall, do you have additional information for our review?
Dr. Comfort? Good evening again, Board. Thanks for the opportunity. We are here tonight with the recommendation that the board approve Parameters Resolution 2024-15. Just to kind of give, go back a little bit and do a brief overview, remember, this is a max parameter resolution, which sets the ceiling to what the district can move forward with in terms of issuing COPs. So that sets the max amount at $120 million. It also sets the max interest amount. What it does not mean is that, if approved, tomorrow we issue COPs. We still have a lot of work to do. We need to continue to finalize our project discussions. We can continue to have conversations about our strategy to pay the remaining COP balance off early. But it does, again, remember, set a timeline of one year. If we approve it tonight, we have one year to issue those COPs. It also then gives the district agility that when we're through with all of our planning, and the board is comfortable with the project discussion and the plan to repay the COPs, then, when the market is right, we can move very quickly to issue those COPs. And so we did just want to revisit, I'm so used to looking up there. We did want to revisit a little bit of data that we talked about last week. Again, we do think that this is very well-timed, given the recent ballot initiatives that failed so significantly when asking the community for additional money. I do want to remind the board and the community that we are not asking the community for money. We are also not asking to pay off the COP with existing instructional or compensation funds. The funding for this comes directly from our MLO capital fund, which the voters approved to be spent on capital needs. So there is no funding that will come from anywhere else other than the capital program, which that money can only be spent on capital needs. So that works well. So revisiting the recent election results, we also wanted to bring back up the escalation of construction costs. Remember, we talked about the Adams Project and what it cost when we did it, what it would cost now, what it costs in 10 years. $120 million of projects right now, if we wait five years, costs us over $156 million. If we wait 10 years, is just shy of $200 million. So waiting in the sense of undertaking larger capital projects is only going to get more expensive. And that's only assuming modest increases in construction costs. So we just wanted to revisit that. And then ultimately, again, as we talked about last time, we are in this Parameters Resolution looking at a 10-year call option. We still have the seven-year because that was a brief discussion. And so what this shows is the total potential debt service if we do nothing, if we just maintain the COP for the full 25 years. I believe the board is interested in exploring opportunities to pay that debt down early. And so the most typical, or the most common way that we pay COPs off early is through the passing of a bond. We can very clearly put in bond language that we want to use proceeds from that to pay this off when that call option becomes available. But there are other strategies. If we were able to do that at 10 years, we would save about $40.9 million. We also, though, don't want to only assume that we will pass a bond. We could, if we wanted, if the board was interested, we could set aside money every year to have a chunk of money at 10 years ready to pay off the remaining principal. That would cost us about $8.3 million a year, if we wanted to pay it off outright. Now, we might not be able to pay off the entire remainder of the COP at 10 years. Any amount of money that we set aside over the next 10 years, when we're then able to refinance for a lower interest rate, we can also buy down that debt. And so there's lots of opportunities. We will absolutely engage in that conversation with the board as we finalize project discussions so that the board is very comfortable with any decision on how we want to commit to paying off this COP early. But that's that. And I did want to, I did want to make one other note. We are, well, I did some research on large districts that don't have bond debt, right? Because the board approved the paying off of our previous bond, the 2006 bond debt, last year. That's great. We are very rare in Colorado, for the size of school district, not carrying any bond debt. I even called Glenn to be like, Glenn, am I right here? And Glenn said, yes. D11 is, he didn't say the only, but he said it is incredibly rare for a district of our size to not be carrying any bond debt. So on one regard, that's a really good thing. We followed through on our commitment to the community to pay that debt off early. We also have to acknowledge that that also means we haven't significantly invested in our facilities since the passing of that bond. And so that's just something also to take into consideration. So with that, I turn it over to the board.
So thank you. Thank you for the clarity and providing that additional information and context. Board, questions? Director Bankus?
From your presentation tonight, I know that you have taken the questions that have come to you from the board seriously and addressed each and every one of them. And for those who are listening and those in the room, this is quite an undertaking. And a lot of questions have been asked. A lot of scrutiny has been given to this opportunity for us to upgrade our buildings. And again, I want to thank you for providing additional information that we need to hear more than once. And I think the important piece, two of the important pieces that you mentioned tonight is, one, we did vote on this board to go ahead and retire our earlier debt. And that was, I think, a financially strategic thing to do, which frees us up to make, to take another look at what we have in finance balance, so that we don't have to go to our taxpayers and say, oh, thank you so much, but we have $700 million worth of upgrades to our buildings, and we need more money. What we're doing instead is using financial expertise out of your department and the people in your department to be able to say, and through Mr. Gall's guidance as well, that how can we best use our money in order to accomplish what it is that we want to do? Instruction is one piece, and that's why we're all here, to educate kids. But the other piece is to house those kids and the staff and the parents when they come safely, securely, and pleasantly. And all of that's going to be accomplished, I think, in the plans that keep getting refined through our many questions that we ask. And for, again, for those who are listening, I want them to know that we have asked a lot of questions. And I think your hair was gray before you got to this point. So thank you.
Well said, Director Bankus. You summarized it really well. The promise that we made and... The promise that we made, and paying off the debt early, and also... Yes. Director Nelson.
Yeah, I'm glad that you brought that up, because that was in the back of my mind, that previous boards thought about the future, and came up with a plan of how we could pay off that bond debt early. And so, over Thanksgiving break, I had so much stress over this idea of us taking out a loan that would cost $94 million in interest for $120 million. And I was just, there was, there was a lot of distress there for me over break. And so it was, I don't take this decision lightly, but I recognize that it's a necessary move, and that the district has sort of been stagnant when it comes to capital improvements, and that there was a time period of 20 years where a bond was not available to us. And so that's partly how we are in the position we're in, with not having capital proceeds to put towards the just maintenance costs of running a school district. So I am grateful to Superintendent Gall and Dr. Comfort for just continuing to walk us through this process, and reminding me that this is not a signing on the dotted line yet. There will be many more conversations, and I have asked that we look at how, if a bond were to not pass in the future, could we tighten our belts? I think we owe that to the community, to take a really deep dive into our budget, and see what strategies we can come up with, what's Plan B, to be able to pay this debt off early, like previous boards came up with a plan. So I just wanted to let the community know that we are committed to, I am committed to figuring out how to make this less than a $94 million interest payment for 25 years. So, thank you all. And please, if you have feedback for us, we would be glad to hear it. And we have not decided the projects yet that this money will go towards. There will be many more conversations to come.
Thank you, Treasurer Nelson. I'm sorry you had to spend your Thanksgiving week in distress, but it just shows that you take your job as treasurer really seriously. So, Director Loma.
Well, unlike, unlike one director, I was eating turkey. I didn't worry about none of that stuff. But what did strike me when you said, we're one of the very few that has a bond, but we're also one of the oldest, and we don't put very much money into our old ancient buildings. So it's evident. And I understand the number of 94 million, but you buy a house for, you know, $300,000, you're going to pay 600. So it's all relative. You know, we have a budget, we're at just around a half a billion dollars. So it's kind of relative. It seemed like a big number, and it is, but it's, for what we're doing, I think we'll be okay. Because, you know, you could walk into some of our schools, and I'm expecting some kind of Viking to come around the corner, and the building's so old, I'm like, wow. So I'm glad that we're going to invest into the schools, you know, air conditioning, make it modern. Otherwise, there's going to be other options, and we want to be the option, right? So we have to do these things, so that we can be the option, the choice. We'll draw people from around, from everywhere, draw them here. But it takes this type of investment. So I appreciate our superintendent's drive towards that, and all the work that you've done, Dr. Comfort.
Director Jorgensen.
Yeah, I think to Director Nelson's point, you know, when you think about costs today of construction, and then hearing Dr. Comfort mention, you know, cost five years from now, cost 10 years from now, at the opportunity to take care of projects now, and to get our students and staff what they want right now, are always, you know, the potential to delay this for, you know, rates, or whatever Miami needed to grow. So I appreciate taking that tonight from Dr. Comfort. The other thing I wanted just to clarify, we are not choosing yet the term for the early call options yet, until we actually choose to deploy the funds, is that correct?
In the parameters resolution, it is written as 10-year right now. And so we, if we were going to make, if we were going to make different adjustments, we might need to come and adjust the resolution, but because it's a max parameters, that would just be the one thing that we might have to come back to the Board for, if we decided to come for a much, a much earlier call option. We do have, I apologize, I should have mentioned this at the front, we do have Mr. Dan O'Connell back with us from RBC Capital, and Kim Crawford from Butler Snow, they're on WebEx with us. And so if they have anything to chime in there, I would welcome their feedback.
Someone wants to chime in.
Yes, quickly on the question there from the Board member, I did want to clarify that this is a max parameters resolution, meaning that the max is 10 years. So if you do decide to do seven, which is less than 10 years, you would not need to come back to the Board to redo the resolution. This would set that as the max at 10, but you certainly have the flexibility between now and pricing to do a lesser call option.
Well, thank you for the clarification, and I think that's what I remember you saying. Back to you, Director Jorgensen.
That's actually all I had, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments or questions? So a couple of things that I do want to emphasize out here. One of that things is that election results that you showed, that page where so many of our surrounding neighboring districts went for a bond option in the recent elections, and they all failed, most of them failed, or at least the ones that were there. So this shows that we are trying to use the money that we have, as opposed to going out and asking for more money, and imposing a tax burden on our community. And like you mentioned, this starts the process, and we have a one-year window. And now, when the market is ready, then you would be able to hit the switch. And please keep the Board updated, and let us know as the projects develop. I'm sure we will get regular updates on this. With that...
Director Nelson.
Oh, Director Nelson, I didn't see you.
I have a question for the folks online now. Can you speak a little bit to, because you work in this area with many school districts, is my understanding. So can you provide a little bit of background to your experience with other school districts, and how they've intended to pay off the COP? Did they generally let it go through the life commitment of, say, ours is 25 years? Or is it typical that they strategize and are able to pay it off early, or rely on a bond to do so?
You know, it's changed over the course of time, and maybe Kim has something to add to that as well, but I'll start. To be honest, your district is unique in that it seems like the moment you incur any debt, or COPs in this case, you immediately start thinking about paying them off. So that's great. Most districts do not think about that immediately, and they do all have the 10-year call option, so they have the ability to either call those COPs in, or refinance them at lower rates. So both of those are certainly a positive, when you're talking about saving interest cost. But I would say, up until about the last three to five years, most districts would let those COPs go for most of the term. We have had a few districts, as of late, that would depend, to some extent, on a geo-bond election, and they would actually have what's called an extraordinary redemption provision built in there, that would say, we could pay this off with geo-bond proceeds at this certain date. And that would be inside of one or two years sometimes. Now, that's unique. In this case, given that there is uncertainty as to if and when there would be a geo-bond election, I think that the call feature that you have written in here, as is, makes the most, makes sense. And certainly because you have those capital dollars set aside in the MLO fund, you know, it allows for that planning forward.
Yeah, this is Kim Crawford. I agree with Dan. Very few school districts actually pay off their certificates of participation early. A couple that I can think of specifically did COPs a year earlier than an election, because they just didn't want to have the election that particular year, and they had capital needs. And so they went into the COP knowing that they were going to have an election. But as you know, elections aren't always successful, so you also have to plan on not being able to do that. But I can only think of probably three or four districts, off the top of my head, that have actually used geo-bond proceeds to pay off COPs.
Okay.
Maybe a few more, but not, not many.
Thank you. That's really helpful for me to have that background and context.
But we will absolutely support the Board's wish to explore opportunities to pay, to pay the debt off early. Hear that loud and clear.
Yep. It just speaks, Director Bankus mentioned this, the financial stewardship that is trusted by the community in elected Board members. We want to, we take that responsibility seriously. Roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpackham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the resolution is approved.
Before Brandon leaves, if you can just come back up, I want to do a public acknowledgement, and thank you for the amount of work that's gone in. This is, this is a foreign concept. We're bringing new innovative ideas to how to solve longstanding problems. And so first, I want to thank the Board. This is a Board that was elected to break the status quo, and to bring change to the district. This is the Board that now, in its ultimate meeting, has set the conditions for the next Board to now own the design of how it is that we implement those COPs. So we have now laid those conditions for change, that are investments in the futures of our children, in as many schools in the right ways that we can touch. And we believe this will also change the perception in the community, that the partnership between the needs of the public infrastructure are to invest in what it is that that infrastructure represents. And for us, it is in the education of our children. Director Loma commented, when we were talking about a track and field at Mitchell, of this is investing in our kids to get our families to believe in our schools to come there. This is a further extension of that. The thanks goes to Dr. Comfort. This thanks also goes to Doug from RTA, you're here, if you just want to wave your hand and be acknowledged. Dan and the team from RBC, and Patrick is not here today, from Perkman Zeisman, but their ability to get us into the spaces, to understand how it is that we can be thinking about the future, instead of just constantly reevaluating the problems of the past, I think has set the conditions for us to really break ground. And I'm excited to think that, in 18 months, we, or this next Board, may all be standing with gold shovels, with our foot in the dirt, digging a hole, while all the surrounding districts are still complaining about how they don't have enough money to even cover their own internal needs, and the fact that they weren't able to pass a request for money at a time when inflation is high, cost of living is increased, and property tax valuation has people feeling very, very challenged on their, on their annual budget. So, thanks to the team, and thanks to the Board for your support.
One more comment.
Go ahead.
Not done yet. And so, given your comments, looking back, when some of us came on the Board two years ago, and we looked at the enormous amount of money that it was going to take to upgrade our buildings, and to provide the, the image, or the forward-thinking that we wanted to pursue, in order to make sure that our kids are best taken care of, it was overwhelming. And in talking about it, and trying to elicit conversations that would say, what's another way to do this? In 18 short months, here we are. So thank you. Thank you all.
Since we are saying thank you, I do want to thank Treasurer, Treasurer Nelson, too. I know that you put a lot of work behind the scenes in getting this presentation ready, and in a way that is understandable for the general public, too. So thank you.
Yeah, and go to sleep.
Director...
Can I just make a comment?
Go ahead.
It is a emotional thing that we're putting a stake in the ground, that the district is moving forward. We are doing something. And I didn't actually fully realize that until speaking with a staff member recently, that a lot of people are invested in the district succeeding, and just looking good for our kids. And so, you know, to have the bond fail two years ago was crushing for so many, and then to see, as Director Bankus mentioned, where the district was at with maintenance, we still have a long ways to go, but this is taking a step forward. And so I just want to recognize that it's not just me that is stressed out. There's a lot of people who have, are invested in this decision. So thank you all for your support.
So just want to make sure, with all the discussions after this, I did call for roll call. Okay.
Oh, yeah, you did.
Moving on, Director Loma, can you please make the motion for action item F5?
Number five, yes, I can. I move that the Board of Education approves resolution, resolution 2024-16 for the Orton Academy charter school transfer application.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Again, this item was presented as a non-action item during the November 8th regular meeting, and we also had a work session on this. So we've had multiple discussions, and the Board has also had some questions that was presented to Superintendent Gall. We heard from the DAC, their recommendation. Superintendent Gall, any further?
Dr. Melsberg, anything further? Nope. We have a strong contingent here from Orton. Ready for any other questions from the Board?
Thank you so much, and I also recall some of the public comments that we had here, too, that where parents came and shared some of their, how your dyslexia programs end up helping, supporting their students. Comments, questions? Director Bankus.
I would like to add that the comprehensive application that you submitted to us, plus the parents who came and spoke to us, have been meaningful and in-depth. And so it's very comforting to be able to vote aye when the vote time comes. And we wish you all the success, and we plan on visiting. So thank you.
Director Rock.
Thank you. I just want to note, you know, you're turning out, and I appreciate that. Also, thank you for all of the answers you've provided to our many questions, but really, thanks for showing up.
Director Nelson.
Thank you for providing a service to a population in our community. Is it 12 or 15 to 20% that, up to 20% of our population has dyslexia? And so to me, this is a no-brainer. Why would we not partner with you all to support so many? And so I look forward to working with you all, and I'm excited for this partnership. So, welcome!
Director Loma.
Well, I was struck, when we had our work session, by our chief academic officer. She said this, and I don't know if everybody heard it, but I grabbed it, because we understand the importance of reading. You know, if you don't read by third grade, all the stats are there, we don't have to belabor that, we know it's not good. But she said, it would be best if all of our students were taught to read in this method. And I snatched that. And why? Because apparently, the technique that you're using works. And if we could do that, not just for dyslexic individuals, but for every child, then that is part, not all, but I think a very major part of solving a lot of societal problems. So I grabbed that right away. So I don't, although I'm glad you're here, and that's, to me, that's just like, okay, that's little. There's so much potential in taking your expertise across all of our elementary schools, from kindergarten to second grade, at the minimum, and then seeing what that does to our scores. It not only improves the reading scores, but, you know, if you can't read, you can't do your math problems, all that stuff. It all just begins to, you know, snowball. So that's what I'm looking forward to. And I, you know, Thanksgiving, I spent with all my grandbabies. I have nine grandbabies, no, yeah, I think, nine grandbabies and four great-grandbabies, and I don't know all their names. I do, I do, but I kept forgetting them. I go, which one is you? And I was really weird. But they're all little, and they're all going to be in school, and, you know, quickly. You know, so I was with, I had a big old picture of all of them. They're all, you know, what, two, three, four, one, zero, they're just all these babies. And I go, man, in a few years, they're going to be in school. And I want them to have the best school, that's why I do what I do. But I really think there's more to you than meets the eye. I believe...
Thank you, Director Loma. I'm just imagining you with nine grandbabies. You are blessed, so. Any further comment? Director Jorgensen, did you have anything? Director Ott.
So two things, I just want to clarify. One, we do have, I mean, you have a great program from, and I'm looking forward to obviously improvements. Hopefully you can pull it out of turnaround, that's something. But we do have our own dyslexia qualified teachers and our own developing program, thankfully. So I want to recognize that, and, you know, perhaps there will be many, many ways to work together. And second, this is, of course, approving the application for the contract, and the contract will come. So just to clarify that, if anybody's not clear, it's movement forward, and while that's excellent, there is still that final step. We will presumably see the contract next spring. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Ott. You made my job easier. I was going to summarize that, and you did that really well. Thank you. And what Director Ott said, I do want to emphasize that too. You do provide a service that we appreciate for the dyslexic students, but the turnaround status, it is a concern. I know that the demographic of students that you teach come with inherent set of challenges, but the hope is that you will continue to grow and show that improvement here to here. And thank you for what you're providing. And Director Ott said exactly this, this is just approving the initial application. The contract will come later. Roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Mal Pakem?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Yay, welcome.
Well, we usually don't allow applause on the board, but we will make an exception for this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you again for being here.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-21, coordinated election, designated election official update. Director Ott, can you please make the motion for action item F6?
Yes. I move that the Board of Education approves Resolution 2024-21, the 2023 coordinated election participation and designated election official update, and identifies Melissa Olson as the designated election official for the remainder of the 2023 coordinated election duties and responsibilities.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded, I think this speaks for itself, whatever duties that are left, Melissa Olson is willing to take on that responsibility. Do you want anything to add, Ms. Olson?
There are very few duties left.
Okay. Well, but you will do, you will perform those duties with exception, exceptionally well. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Director Mal Pakem?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Aye.
So looking at board members' future agenda item requests, I know that the board is transitioning. The new board will get seated next week, but if you do have requests for new agenda items. Seeing none. Calendar review, Wednesday, December 6th. And for our media partners too, thank you for being here, welcome. Hopefully you will come back next week for the special meeting, the oath of office for newly elected board members, and also recognizing Director Loma and Director Daniels. That will take place December 6th. Wednesday, December 13th is a regular meeting, tentatively right now for the board, board's schedule, Wednesday, December 20th. We are looking into scheduling a board retreat.
20th?
20th, the next Wednesday. Wednesday, 20th, December 20th, the board retreat. And that might responsibility for the new board president more so. We will start the process. I think Superintendent Gall is looking at options as to who can facilitate that conversation. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Melissa, roll call, please.
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Mal Pakem?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
We are adjourned at 7:09.
I'm not used to getting out at 7:09.
Yes, let's make it.